You are good to go, Mayor.
Okay, let's break our session to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I guess we'll say it's on there. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under- Under- With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's open it up for visitor comments. Do you know if we have Lisa, her name?
Trina.
Trina, did she make it over?
It does not appear that I see her on the list.
Okay, if somebody would like to share or has visitor comments, please raise your hand.
I do not see any public members. It looks like all staff and contractors.
Okay, well, when we see Trina come in, we're gonna let her come into our meeting and give comment, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, so we're gonna go into deliberations, amendments to the City of St. Helens Floodplane Regulation, also a change to the size increase of accessory structures allowed without permitting. So, I was opposed to the wetland floodplain, but with Jacob clarifying as some various jurisdictions, I'm okay with it as far as the commercial side of things. The buildings, I think that's a great idea. Why are we wasting somebody's time when they don't have to buy a building permit?
Well, and it was different because building permit was one way and planning was a different way. And so it just made it so complicated. It's like, just let people have their building and let them put their lawnmower in a little shed. Just make it easy.
Yep. Any other comments? Council President Morton?
No comments.
No comments? Okay.
I'm fine with it.
I'm okay.
And we've talked about it a couple of times.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Will we approve the changes as written by staff?
And I need a second.
I don't think I could hear Mr. Topaz.
Oh, yeah, we can't hear you, Councilor Topaz. Your computer on your screen there. Hit that volume button again. Where you see the headphones?
I saw his lips moving.
Yeah.
Let the minutes be known that Topaz mouthed the second.
Put your thumb up if you second it, Steve. No, your thumb.
There you go.
Okay, well, we need to get that fixed for you, Steve, so continue to work on that. All right, so I have a motion made and seconded to approve as staff recommended for the floodplain regulations and accessory structures allowed without permitting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve, give a thumbs up.
I like that. Just make certain it's your thumb.
Yes, okay, ordinance. Yes.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, but Trina looks like she finally found her way to our meeting.
Oh, great, Trina.
She carried over.
Welcome to our meeting. Matt's gonna unmute you here. Hi there.
Okay, hello.
Hi. How are you?
I'm okay. I was waiting to talk about my building since I live in Cottage Grove. I'm three hours away, so it's a long drive.
Sure.
And I can't talk in person anyway, but I have five tenants in my building on Columbia Boulevard, and it's in the Holton District. And Burrito USA, they are in Scappus. Are you familiar with them?
I am.
Okay, so Burrito USA wanted to open a business in my building, and they wanted opening date on April 1st. But once again, the city has told them that they have to have the back area paved, the parking area, which is less than 10% of the entire building structure, which Jacob and Jenny and I have all gone over for the past three or four years that I've owned this building. And now Burrito USA tells me they don't have money to pave the back. I don't have money to pave the back. With this COVID virus that's going around, I don't even have tenants paying rent because they can't pay the rent because they're not open. So I have a very well-established business trying to move into my building, and they cannot start their business because of the back needing to be paved. It is about $6,000 to pave that, what, 200 square feet or something of parking? I don't have that kind of money, and I don't want to lose a very good tenant. We need more restaurants in the City of St. Helens, and they're very popular. The restaurant is, they have really good food, they're great people. I don't want to lose these tenants because the City of St. Helens wants me to pave the back parking lot. It's on Kraus Way. And like I said, you know, it's hard times, the COVID virus, my tenants aren't paying rent. Not all of them anyway, some are, but I mean, these are hard times. Seriously, I'm gonna lose my person because of a paving parking structure? Is there any way the city insists on having it paved? Is there a grant or something where the city can pay for it? Because I sure can't. If you look at my property taxes, I haven't even been able to pay two years of property taxes yet because I'm constantly putting in money on that building.
Jenny, you're with planning, and could we do a condition on that? Could we? Could we work-
I wanted to have Jacob weigh in, and I wanted to know specifically because, don't you own the building where Strange Birds was?
Yes, yes, I do. That's where Wibblebutts is.
Yeah, Strange Birds did not have to pave that, so why would the other place-
I know, so-
I wanted Jacob to weigh in on that.
Okay, I have five tenants. I have five of them.
But your building has been pulled before, and no one else had to pave it.
Yeah.
So that's-
Exactly.
It's mine now.
Okay, I'm gonna share-
I don't know why.
I'm gonna share a screen.
Okay.
Oh.
I don't want to lose these tenants.
Go ahead, Jacob. You are co-host now. Okay.
You got the whole world, Jacob.
I do.
So Trina, have they gotten all their building permitting done?
Yes, they do have all the building permitting done. You guys put a stipulation on it saying that they cannot open until that is paved in the back. And they were going to open April 1st, and now they can't even open. This will put them out three months, and no one has the money to pay for the paving.
And they, you know, they haven't talked to us at all since the decision was issued, so this is the first time I've heard of this. But anyways, so here's Columbia Boulevard, and then here's Kraus. So this is the building suite here.
Yes.
And just to give everybody some geographic context, now, this is the staff report, and this is the area behind the building along Kraus.
Yes, right in there.
And so the restaurant triggered the site development review. And Jenny and I, you know, beat our heads over this for some time. And because it triggered the site development review, we had to consider the city's provisions that say any area traversed on by vehicles is supposed to be paved with some exceptions. And one place where you can't have the exception is within 25 feet of a road. And so because the restaurant triggered the site development review, it's not an uncommon requirement to have some paving to bring a development up to compliance, and so that's why it was required. And the area is shown there.
So you're gonna make me lose a restaurant because you want me to pull money out of my butt that I can't do right now? I don't have tenants paying their rent. How can I pave that? That's gonna keep me from bringing Burrito USA into my building, into the town of St. Helens.
Jacob, this is-
You guys want the place to grow.
Jacob, this is Doug, and I have a question. I was gonna ask Jenny this question. She deferred to you.
Well, because this is a staff recommendation, this did not go to Planning Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why I had Jacob give his opinion first.
I'm not accusing you of anything. I was just explaining where I was in this process. Okay, so is it possible to give a condition on this of six months or possibly a year to put the paving off until that time? We've done this before, and in a time of crisis, I can understand, you know, why this is an issue. But I do agree with the decision that it needs to be paved. I'm just curious that if we could impose a condition of a time.
That is something to consider. Our code says those kind of requirements can be within a year or sooner if conditioned. A lot of times, we will condition them before occupancy. But under the circumstances, you know, we can think of a timeframe, six months is fair.
Do you have any grant money? Are there any grants? I can't afford that.
So I just wanna weigh in a little bit. I don't think that's too unreasonable. What I'm hearing, you could always file for an extension, Trina, if you needed to. And I'm not here to try to tell you, your quote you got seems rather ridiculous, in my opinion. In my opinion, for a 200-square-foot area of asphalt, I would beg you to look up some local contractors like Rodney Moore, like maybe out of Rainier, Michael George, people like that that do smaller jobs. That seems very, very extremely high. Six grand is extremely way too much. I am getting ready to pave a road that the city has required me to put in, and it is 500 foot long, 20 foot wide, and I'm at 21,000, and that's them gravelling and compaction and all that.
Well, Jacob said it has to be like 25 inches deep or something. I don't know. But also, Jacob told me if the parking structure is 10% or less of the whole building structure, I don't have to have it paved. It is less than 10%.
Yeah, it's a 25-foot off the road, if you were listening to him. I heard him.
Yeah.
I haven't talked to him prior to this either. This is the first I've heard of this issue.
I don't want to lose my tenant. I don't want to lose my tenant.
That's why we're trying to work with you, Trina. That's why we're trying to work with you.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, try to figure something out here.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that, because I mean, I'm really stressed.
Yeah, I definitely think that maybe there's some, like, you know, a certain allowable time for her to find cheaper bids and, you know, in a better economic time, because people are getting extensions on evictions, extensions on utilities. It seems like giving somebody more time to comply seems like the least we can do in the COVID situation. I mean, she's trying to bring business, and we're concerned earlier about businesses surviving this. We have to be concerned about the owner surviving this as well.
So Trina, are they ready for a final building inspection?
No, they stopped doing everything because you said that they cannot do anything until that is paved. You basically did a stop build on them until that is paved. They were gonna open, they were gonna put everything together until they got that information, and they told me they wanted to open in April, April 1st, which was a couple of weeks ago. But as soon as they got-
And I get what they're thinking, Jacob. I mean, I'm not gonna go and invest in a building and put hoods or whatever I need to do to make it a kitchen to serve Mexican food, knowing that I gotta do asphalt now. That could be a deal breaker, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Is $30,000 just in equipment that they're doing?
So I mean, I would be happy with an extension of time to comply.
On the asphalt.
Yeah, for that.
On the asphalt.
And if they post it that it's not for customer parking, I mean, if it's employees and they get extra time, because-
It is posted. It's posted private.
Yeah, okay.
It's posted all over.
Yep, so I hear you saying extra time, so I would just say a year with all this COVID. Give her a year.
I agree. I agree.
I also agree. Thank you. I agree with that. I mean, it gives me a year, you know, and hopefully my tenants will start being successful again in their businesses. But like I said, I have people who aren't paying. How do I know when the COVID thing's over, they're not gonna say, well, I'm just gonna pack up and leave?
Right, but a year gives you time to budget, you know, and time to plan.
No, thank you. Thank you. I agree with that.
A year from this day?
Well, we just, so in these kind of cases, what happens is we send them correspondence to say, you know, in this decision, condition, whatever number it is, says this. Upon reconsideration and under the pandemic circumstances, we have decided to grant you a year to accomplish these requirements. And then it's in the file in writing, and then we put it in the calendar, track it, and hope that it's done within a year.
Sure, and then if stuff's not going good, Trina, you make sure you approach us well before the year, so it's not a big issue, okay? Well, if you have a rational-
Can you tell me the names of those contractors again?
Sure. Rodney Moore-
I see that keyword.
It's Melvin Moore Construction.
Okay.
And he's very low.
No, that's more.
And then Michael George, and then Michael George is out of Rainier.
Michael George.
Yep. And it's pretty small, the job for Tommy, probably, Fisher Construction.
Yeah, Tommy Fisher does huge ones. Tommy Fisher does big jobs.
But Rodney does driveways, and he'd like combine yours with somebody probably somewhere and make a lot better deal than $6,000.
I did not get the Rodney. I can't say that name, the Rodney guy.
That's actually Melvin's son. He's running the business.
Oh, Melvin's son, okay.
Yep, okay. All right, Trina.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you for the extension. I'll get a hold of it.
Yes, tell them they just gotta comply with the rest of the permitting process, but we're waiving the asphalt. Not waiving it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jacob.
Yep, the problem. Thanks.
Okay.
I'm leaving.
Have a good night, Trina. Okay, so ordinance, final reading. Ordinance number 3252, and ordinance vacating a portion of Yumitilla Street right of way.
Will we adopt ordinance number 3252?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve ordinance 3252. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, hearing none. Steve, you got audio yet?
He's trying.
Lisa was trying to work with him.
Okay. I would really like to get him on the record.
Counselor Topaz, if you can hear me, you can hit a yes or no button.
I can see him talking on the phone with Lisa, okay. All right, we're on to resolution number 1880, a resolution of the City of St. Helens City Council adopting a strategic work plan for 2020-2021.
Will we approve resolution 1880 as read?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution 1880 as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution 1881, a resolution of the City of St. Helens City Council adopting a city council team agreement.
Will we approve resolution 1881 team agreement?
Second.
I got a question on that.
Okay.
In our work session, we talked briefly, and Steve Topaz brought up an issue regarding expertise in a policy, possibly. Was there verbiage changed in that, John Walsh, by chance?
I didn't get a chance to do any updates since between the meetings. So I think what we talked about was some of the goals. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do recall him talking about that.
Okay, so that was in the goals, I'm sure.
Yeah, what we talked about with the resolution 1881 was, my recollection was that things that could be merged into the governing policy.
Right. Right, and then I don't have that in front of me, but I'm reading the resolution, and I can't open a, I could not open a team agreement. Is that, is there any difference? And is our attorney with us by chance? Ed, are you there?
I don't see him.
Okay, is there any difference in the word agreement as opposed to policy? In terms of a policy rather than an agreement, agreement sounds a little stringent to me. I mean, it sounds very stringent. Somebody help me and weigh in on that, please.
I believe Counselor Topaz's mic is not working.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Lisa, we're connected. Thank you.
Oh, he's there now.
Yeah.
Welcome back, Steve.
I'm back.
Oh, you were here, but welcome, audio.
Yeah.
Okay, so I like the word policy much better than I do agreement. A policy means somewhat of an operating standard. An agreement means that if you're late to a meeting, you can be held responsible, and how responsible? Because you agreed to be there on time? I don't get this. I think it's a little stringent. I think it's a little confining. Other counselors, weigh in, please.
Well, I mean, I like it. So I mean, I hadn't really pondered the difference of the agreements. I like the fact that it holds each of us accountable, because I think that we've had some issues with people not always being on the same page about letting someone speak their piece, making sure that we are civil even when we disagree. And I think that needs strong language, but I don't know whether the word changing it to policy versus agreement really changes it that substantially. But I know that community members have said, you know, that there's been times when things get heated, and they're like, we like that you debate, but we want you to remain respectful with each other, and that's part of what this agreement is. You know, it didn't really, the attendance, we all come, so I wasn't really stuck on that one. But some of the decorum and respect for the oath of office we all took-
Of course.
But if John had an opinion versus one word versus the other.
Yeah, I do. I think that-
Because we have two documents here. One is a policy and one's an agreement.
Right, and this was derived from the George Dunkle sheet with some personalization to the council, and it could very easily live as an agreement or a policy, and they added to the governing policy in some form or fashion. It's really your prerogative. I don't know that there's, you know, agreement versus policy there.
Kind of the same.
Basically, since we're supposed to be civil and respectful.
Yes, it's conduct and decorum, and you among amongst yourselves agreeing to how you're gonna work together.
I mean, I'm fine with the change.
I'm fine with it. I didn't want to change. I just wanted a bit of a conversation about this issue. Is it a policy or is it an agreement that's gonna be stringent? And how is that agreement going to be challenged or actually make certain that we're in line with that agreement?
We need an English major here.
Yeah.
It's work play right now. We're trying to add it to how we work together.
Exactly.
I can't a word. I guess if everybody leaves his sticks and stones at the door, we're way ahead.
Got it.
Hey, we still have some fun, don't we? Okay, any other discussion?
Just, I think there's some crossover between this and our governing rules and the charter, and I would really like to see us have a retreat of some kind soon to talk about all three documents and see what crosses over, what, maybe there's something missing, and then just kinda make sure that we're all on the same page for all the documents.
I don't think that's a bad idea, Keith. I don't think that's a bad idea at all.
It is a good idea, as far as I can see.
Yep.
Just make in it one thing and put it all in one place?
I think so.
Yep, so we're agreeing with it, but we're gonna also review all the three of those, what Keith just talked about, and we're going to our charter, policy, and disagreement, and see where they cross over, or where they maybe. I think that's a great idea in the future, hopefully.
Hopefully this summer sometime.
Yeah, hopefully we'll have some updates within the beginning of next month on, you know, timelines, hopefully. So, okay, other discussion on this? Okay, I have a motion's been made and seconded for resolution 1881. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, award bid contract, A 2020 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project, number S, that 667, to Black Rock Underground LLC, in the amount of $143,000 and six-
Will we award bid contract as read?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to award big contract. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approve and authorize for signature, A Contract with Our Advisors LLC, since align one virus ransomware software. Ratify agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management to sell vehicles. C Agreement to Prater and Morton for HVAC maintenance at the police station. D Ratify agreement with USDA and Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services. E Amend memorandum, it's hard to say when you're, memorandum of understanding with Ashmead for continued therapy, reassignment of April messenger to the municipal clerk job classifications.
Will we approve and authorize signature for eight A through E?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve authorized for signature eight A through E. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Pose. Okay, consent agenda for approval, A Request for Proposal for Janitorial Services. B Council Special Session, Work Session, Executive Session, and Regular Session. B, council special session, work session, executive session, and regular session minutes dated March eleventh, eighteenth, and April first, two thousand and twenty, and C, accounts payable bill list.
Will we approve consent agenda items A, B, and C as read?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda A through C as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so lovely day today. This happens to be my birthday, forty-seven years old day today. You know, I've been noticing a lot of people have been around our community have really been working really hard, that businesses that are open are really, uh, doing their part to protect each other. And, uh, pretty, pretty happy with their progress. And they've had to adapt and adjust as this goes along. And some have closed, um, and some have downsized. I'm hoping that we have a little bit more clear direction, maybe at our next meeting, which would be May sixth. You know, at the state level and the federal level to see kind of where we're at. I think that's, uh, going to be a big indicator to see, um, the curves and the flattening out process. And it's all about the testing on this. It just is. Lot of different moving parts with it. As far as, uh, maybe plasma could be part of, i- if you are immune to it. If you've had it and immune to it, maybe plasma's the right answer. They're saying that it worked for a couple of patients and, this, looking forward to getting back to at least a little bit of normalcy. Cause this is, this isn't normal. These are not normal times. And, and, uh, I, I just, I'm in fear that people are gonna not know normal. That generations to come, this could be that impactful. And, uh, praying for our community and our citizens and, uh, that they're safe and, uh, that we can get through this and, and do our thing, you know, get out and do our thing. So, that's what I got to report. Counsel President Morton.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, uh, first of all, backtrack just a minute and refer back to our work session. And hopefully in that, uh, May sixth, uh, meeting, that we'll have deliberations on what we heard about the, the question about using the, uh, restrooms or using the park, McCormick Park or whatever. We did not deliberate, and hopefully we can deliberate on that, uh, on that question on May sixth and, uh, uh, give those people an answer. And in the meantime, some of the, you know, we had a half a dozen people from our community step forward and, uh, paint a pretty gloomy picture of what it would be like if, uh, we allowed the restrooms to open up or the showers to shower points or whatever in our, in either of the parks. It was, uh, it was overwhelming in terms of the, uh, testimonies that were, that were given. Uh, one from a community member, a longtime, uh, community activist, a stakeholder in our community, Diane Dillard, gave a, a very convincing report against, uh, utilizing, uh, the showers or McCormick Park in any way. And our biggest, and our biggest and most effective, uh, communication came from our police chief. And as I recall, uh, back, uh, our police chief at that time, Terry Moss, years ago, uh, said that there was such a problem in McCormick Park and, uh, with the homeless people leaving needles all around that it put his, uh, staff at risk. And he said something has to be done. And so he led the charge in terms of, uh, the, the no camping ordinances in the, uh, in the parks. And, uh, and, uh, you know, it's made so much sense. Things have cleaned up. Our public is using our parks. And, uh, I don't want that to go away. We don't want that to be compromised, I don't think. I don't want it to be compromised in any way. So, I've, uh, I'll be glad to see and, and, uh, work with, uh, the deliberations when they, when they come up. And, uh, hopefully that'll come up in our next session so we can put this to rest. And in the meantime, I got a letter from a concerned citizen who gave this to me. And I said, okay, I'll read it tonight in my report. And it's a couple paragraphs, and it says, "We have a growing problem of homelessness in our community. For a long time, they camped in McCormick Park, but after the parks closed to camping, many of them left and few camped on the port property near the old mill. Now the numbers have grown and so has the need for them to have bathing facilities as well as toilets. The problem remains that they leave garbage and their drug use paraphernalia on the ground. It's no surprise that most of these people have mental illness but will not seek or accept help. The Portland Trail Blazers have given a grant to the parks to refurbish the playground. Let's keep it safe for our kids. The problem is so bad in North Portland that the police have a full-time job rounding them up and out, that's rounding the, uh, homeless up, uh, out of the part, out of the public parks. It prohibits the general public from using those parks and poses a definite threat to the children walking by. If we allow camping in the parks, we're just inviting the homeless to come here and occupy our city. Increasing work of our police, fire, and public work departments. They are really struggling to keep it as it is. I personally feel no one should be allowed to camp in the public park and the responsibility for providing space and bathroom facilities, including showers, should not fall on the city. The county has spaces that would, that would not encroach upon the general public such as the fairgrounds or the armory. Other possibilities might be the high school showers during the shutdown. These options seem like much safer solutions for everyone." So I wanted to read that for the record. A citizen gave that to me to read, and I just read it. That's my report. Thank you.
Good, Counsel President Morton. Uh, let's go to Counsel Carlson.
I don't really have anything to add. I wish you a happy birthday earlier.
Oh, thank you.
Didn't know if that'd get me a piece of fish or not.
Well, if I'd caught one, it might have.
I take mine smoked, a little extra salty. But I just want to reiterate also the conversation about small business. It's just with the idea of this extending till the, you know, a month, two months. It's just how many businesses will survive and property owners? And we just have to be open to supporting them in any way we can. I've always been a big advocate for the Meals on Wheels. This virus, um, for the seniors and our vulnerable is super critical. And they are shut in and locked in for their lives now. And whatever we can do to make sure they're continuing to get food is important. Um, I know that all of us do what we can, when we can. Um, and just, you know, I see a lot of community members pitching in and helping out where they can. And I just really appreciate everybody's hard work. And we will get through this, and lots of people are ready to help when that day comes. That's all I got.
Thanks, Jenny. So, the city has, uh, put out a, um, letter, it's million dollar letter to small businesses with all the different various links and, um, to, to apply for grants or whatever they may need in order to help. So, uh, help them. So, we sent that out, I think started yesterday morning sending that out. So. Okay, Counselor Locke.
So, uh, I, I wondered, does, uh, our president, does he have a form to fill out if you want some of that stimulus money? You know, we could pass that out to all the businesses in town.
Well, he does, and we, that's part of the links. There's a whole list of links that we sent them, Keith.
Good.
Directly to the president, though.
I just want to state that, uh, glad to see that, uh, everybody wants to get together and get on one page with all of our governing rules and that kind of stuff and make sure we're going down the right road.
No, that's a great idea, Keith. It never hurts to review. It's kind of painful because it's going through all that stuff, but it never hurts, ever.
Yeah, everybody has their own opinion of it, what it means.
Sure, yep. Okay, Counselor Topaz. Uh, you, you were done, right, Keith?
Yeah.
Okay.
The food bank needs some help with drivers. The other thing is, as you know, this is the beginning of the year and the farmer's being hurt by not being able to get into their fields. So we somehow have to help them. Eating's going to be really important come the end of August. And right now is when that's starting to happen. One of the things that has been brought up to me by some citizens is the use of the Masonic building as a warehouse, especially in hard times when money comes. And something's got to be done so that looks presentable. That's all I have.
All right. Department reports. Chief, are you on here?
He's down at the bottom.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm here. I, I'm, just a couple of things. We are still, uh, seeing a increase in our domestic violence calls and our violence across the city. It's directly correlated to what we all know, and that's everybody's kind of cooped up in their houses. We're handling it, um, just so everybody's aware, uh, that, you know, the, the police department's tasked a little bit more than usual. So, uh, you know, we're, we're working in concert with the Columbia County Sheriff's Office still, um, but we have protocols in place to limit their contact with the officers in Raymond Safe. Uh, we have gone to the officers wearing, uh, N ninety-five masks, so you'll see them on patrol. Uh, that's a CDC recommendation for law enforcement and first responders, um, and reference that. And the only other thing that I have is through my professional affiliates, um, you know, and I, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. I just want to, you know, we, we, we fail to celebrate sometimes the accomplishments. There is a lot of, uh, police departments across the country that are faced with possibility of laying officers off because of budgetary, budgetary concerns. And I have to just, you know, give kudos to the City of St. Helens. Although I don't say I'm new here anymore, I feel like I'm part of this family. I, I'm just so proud, the fact that, uh, the way that, uh, everybody in the city has managed the budget to where, yes, we're doing our part, um, to tighten the belts and everything. But this, this was in place long before I took this seat. And, uh, I get asked through my, so, you know, my, my, you know, my friends and my colleagues, hey, how are we doing? And I tell them, I go, we're actually fine. I mean, we're not, you know, obviously buying Cadillac Escalades or anything. But, um, you know, for what it's worth, I just, uh, we haven't lost sight of that. So everybody, you know, involved in this and everybody in the council, um, Mr. Walsh, Matt Brown, everybody, just thank you. You know, it's, it's comforting and, and the officers ask a lot as well about their, uh, stability and everything. And I tell them, I said, we're, we're moving forward, you know, um, and, uh, we'll tighten the belt and everything. But, uh, again, uh, I just wanted to applaud each and every one of you as being the, the newest hire, I guess, here and coming in, and, uh, that was on my mind and then seeing everything. So, um, we're, we're doing good as far as, uh, in my opinion. So, thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for that, and thank you for your hard work and your continued efforts to make sure that we are serving our citizens to the, the biggest potential that we can. They're doing a phenomenal job out there, Chief. I, I see them out there. Uh, they'll show up. They have a couple cars, stay away. One officer approaches with the mask. They all have masks ready, and the other two are watching to make sure that scene is de-escalated. And then, once it is, the other two go and the officer does his talk or whatever. And, um, it's just really, they're really, they're really probably taking your advice, so you need to know that.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
One of the things, Chief, that I really, and I know you know, this home violence can switch directions very, very quickly. Have your officers be super, super aware when they go into this home violence business.
Yes, sir. Well, we will do. Thank you, Counselor Topaz.
Okay, Sue.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
That, that's all I have. I hope you have a great evening.
I saw a road closure. Are we doing roadwork today?
Uh, where?
Someplace between my house and the highway. I can't remember. There was a road closed.
Yes, they're, they're getting ready to tap into Seventh Street, uh, water, so they can run that one.
Yeah, Waterline Project. They were probably, um, probably had A and A drilling out here to do the taps. Hold a live tap on the main.
I do.
Hey, they're, hey, they're almost done with Ninth Street, Mayor.
And then, um, is this affecting the, um, do you have any progress on the road in front of the high school? I wondered if this might help them with delays, not having to deal with school buses in and out of there?
Oh, on the Gable Road? Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that that is helping them, uh, on that. We will have a progress meeting tomorrow, um, to see where everybody's at. But that sounds like it's moving forward okay.
Yeah, I noticed.
Yeah.
Concrete was poured last week. I noticed that. They were pouring concrete like mad men.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're doing it in batches.
Super.
Okay, any other questions for Sue? All right, Margaret.
Hi.
Hi, Margaret.
I'm glad you had a happy birthday.
Thank you.
I just want to say how thrilled I am that we're going to be able to go forward with these improvement projects at the library. We've all looked at that, uh, worn carpet for years, and, uh, this was just such a great opportunity. So, I, I sent an email out to the staff and let them know that, uh, it's a go. And, uh, I just got a lot of emails and texts back. Everybody's really excited. Some have said they, they're not sure they'll recognize where they're working when they get back in the building. So, it, it's going to be great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yep. When life gives you a lemon, you make lemonade out of it, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, Matt.
I have nothing to report. Happy birthday.
I have questions for Matt.
Okay, questions for him.
A while ago, like years ago, probably, when we used to have people hanging around everywhere using the Wi-Fi and different things. And we had talked about having hours of operation for the Wi-Fi. Did we ever do that, do you know?
Supposedly Center Logic did that. However, I, I have been able to access the Wi-Fi when I'm here late at night in the public Wi-Fi, so, um, I don't believe it was ever properly done.
My follow-up question is not kill the Wi-Fi, but if, um, my follow-up question is that in one of my live chats with the high school, um, there are families that are doing distance learning that do not have access to the Wi-Fi, and the library is closed. And so their parents are taking them places and kids are sitting in the backseat. So I just want to see, you know, make sure that we're not, if we have shut off the Wi-Fi, that we let people sit within the bubble of the Wi-Fi so their kids can work on their Chromebooks.
Okay, I can take a look at that. I'm still at. I'm, Margaret probably has, uh, hang on, Margaret. Go ahead, Margaret.
Um, the library Wi-Fi comes on at six AM and goes off at ten PM and it's accessible from the front porch of the library and the parking lot.
Okay, super. I just wanted to get that on the public record that that's out there. Because I can't imagine, I have two teenagers doing distance learning, and I can't imagine, I'm lucky to have Wi-Fi at my house, but I can't imagine trying to educate your children and having, not having all the tools, being just one more barrier to.
Yep.
So, thank you. I just wanted to see if we had shut it off. I wanted to make sure it was not shut off. Thank you, Margaret, for clarifying, because that, those steps at the library is a good spot. I do see teens sitting there quite frequently. Super, thank you.
Okay. Kathy.
Yes, I do have something. Um, normally in July, the first meeting in July, we usually, um, cancel that. I am recommending that we keep that meeting because we have boards and commission reports to the council and they are not meeting during April and possibly May. So, they need to have more time to get their report ready for you. So, I just wanted to see what you, council, felt about the schedule for the summer.
When does Fourth of July fall?
Fourth of July is on a Saturday. The first meeting is July first.
Yeah, I'm fine with keeping it on the schedule. We can always cancel it in the middle of June if we, if we need to. But leaving it there, when this opens back up, we're going to be busier, not quieter. But leaving it there, when this opens back up, we're gonna be busier, not quieter. What do you think, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, uh yeah, we'll we'll revisit it.
Okay.
Cuz we we already took the, we were taking two off member and we only went to one, so. So yeah, we could also skip it, kick it down the road too, if we needed to, our our meeting off.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, um John Walsh, City Administrator, how are you?
Doing all right. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
So earlier in the workshop, I was talking about uh basically everything's been all all things COVID and being, you know, working with all its partner agencies in a kind of a reactive mode of responding to the the pandemic and doing our part. And uh and now we're now we're moving into this more of a proactive. Yeah, there's a number of groups out there talking about when the lights come back on, kind of kind of the scenario. And uh none of this support um wouldn't be possible with the, I just wanna give a shout out and a thank you to the council for um supporting staff through this very difficult time. And it's really not gonna notice. Good things by supporting and and not imposing some of the things other communities are doing. And the Counselor Carlson's note about fiscal responsibility, I believe is uh, you know, St. Helens is, or actually Chief Greenway's note about the city being fiscally fiscally responsible is uh, you know, it's really something that, you know, a lot of cities don't have the luxury of having a contingency. There there are cities that are just fly-by-wire and it's, you know, they're they're like really on the line and we're, we have the the luxury of having a reason. There and that that's not my accident, downturn and all the adjustments we made through that process to not
Somebody's sucking up his bandwidth.
Yep, your wifi's fading.
Again, it's All right. We had Comcast out today to turn up the wifi at the house, so we made it north very well. Anyway, that's uh, then thank you and.
Hey, John, speaking of Comcast, before I get you adjourned this, um we had talked to that rep about the program where they give free, if kids are on school lunch and they give free wifi to those families. And I forget his name, but you and I were introduced to him. And uh you you know him. Can you give him a call and ask him uh about our area? Cuz he doesn't, wasn't really rep in our area, but he said he would check into it for us.
So Comcast does a program, it's called Internet Essentials. And so if anybody shows that they get food stamps, that they're on reduced lunch, that they get any assistance at all. All they have to do is show that letter and they get Comcast for ten bucks a month.
Well, I'm hoping that maybe they could even get it without showing that with this with this going on.
Yeah, I mean, I I think the the qualifier is a little lower with this going on cuz some people were employed and now are no longer employed.
Otherwise, we're just gonna have to get a whole bunch more hotspots, aren't we, Margaret? She heard me and she gave me a thumbs up, so. Sorry to interrupt your report, John.
Oh, yeah, yeah, apologies for the connection there. Poor poor audio quality there, but it was beyond my control. That's basically all I have, so.
Okay.
I gotta go back?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, uh I think last council meeting, I asked if we could, uh I asked the council if it would be okay and the staff uh if we could uh convene on our next Parks Commission, scheduled uh Parks Commission meeting by way of Zoom. That would be in May.
Yeah, in May. I think we're gonna be set up in May. I think we put off April, but we're gonna, now we're experts at it. We know how to do it for May. The Planning Commission will go in May. We will meet via Zoom in May.
I was asking Matt and John.
Sorry.
Um I don't have any issues with that. I know Jacob and uh Sue has already been talking with Sherry about getting training on it internally, so they know how to work the meeting, how to host a meeting um and do all of those things. So we've already talked about training and they should be ready to go for May.
Okay, council, have any problems?
No, no, we gotta adapt to these times. So So again, like I was saying, uh council, thank you. Uh the birthday wishes, administration and the city staff, thank you guys for all that you do for our citizens. You do your jobs well. And thank you for the birthday wishes.
Counselor Locke is waving.
And and have a very, thank you. Counselor Locke is waving. He's wanting to talk. Is that why? Come on in, Keith.
So uh Matt, don't you have a go back? What's going on tomorrow?
Um Budget Committee meeting. It's been a busy time. Uh yeah, Budget Committee meeting is tomorrow, seven o'clock. Um I will shoot you all a reminder email with the link to the Zoom meeting.
For dinner.
What's that?
What am I having for dinner? What are we having for dinner?
You can, you can come by City Hall where I'll be and we can go to Molly's. Grab a slice of pizza or a sandwich. She makes sandwiches now. They're pretty good. Yes.
Look at the email. It's at seven o'clock.
It's at seven o'clock.
Okay, all right, so.
Thanks, Keith.
Okay, we are adjourned. Get out of here.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.